Good, so we're ready to start the public hearing for 24 Meadowbrook Road. And we have given this about 45 minutes for review. So if you could try to hold your presentation to perhaps 30, 25 to 30 minutes, then we'd have time for questions from the planning board and our consultants. So who's starting off with a presentation?
Evening, thank you, planning board. My name is Yon Blackston, I'm the architect for the project, and I'd like to introduce the prospective homeowners, Rich and Lori Glitwitz, who are here with us tonight. Rich and Lori.
Hi, I'm Rich Glitwitz, this is my wife Lori, and we've lived in Weston for a little over 10 years. We have three kids, eight, 11, and 14. And we're very excited about the prospect of building this home. It's not just a place for our kids to kind of grow up and move on, but to live, actually, as you see how it's designed all the way through our retirement. Westerners do improve.
Westernians.
Westernians.
Westernites.
And we've assembled a team purposely who have a history of building great homes in Weston, and are very knowledgeable about the needs of the community and fitting the property to the community.
Great. Just to return the kindness, I'm Al Adeline, I'm the chairman of the board, and my other member should introduce himself.
I'm Suzanne Bryce, I'm a board member.
I'm Dana Robinson.
Steve Oppenheimer.
Lloyd Shavelush.
And Joe Layden, Tom Hatter.
We also have with us the current property owner, Mark Catlin, who is also going to be our general contractor. He's at the end there in more of a observing capacity.
You're an auditor?
Yeah. And with us, of course, is our landscape architects, the McDowell Company, we have Lori McDowell, Eric Svensson, and Jeff Ken. Also, currently by our most famous civil engineering surveyors, Rob Gemm of Metro West, and his associate, Mr. [inaudible]. So with that, I just wanted to say a few words. We did have a site walk a week ago with some of the board members here, and we did receive some constructive comments about the plans that we had submitted to the board. It worked diligently with Joe Ken and Dave, four of the funds, taking their comments to sort of, as you will, shape the project to get to this evening. And we, as I obviously said, we did take some of those comments into account. So we have made some modifications that have not been formally resubmitted, but you will see some modifications this evening. So I just want to point that out.
So are those modifications in this packet that we have in front of us, do you know?
No, no, these are the original applications.
They are not, I think. I might have brought a revised planting plan, but what you'll see tonight, and then, you know, the goal would be to, you know, modify our documents and submit them very quickly, you know, before we have any investments. So with that, I'll introduce my colleague, the civil engineer side of us. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I will start out, just walking around the neighborhood, putting the both in the context of existing homes that are there. This is the locus of 24 Meadowbrook Road. And the locus itself is a, is an old raised ranch, and has a gross floor area of about 5,000 square feet. 18 Meadowbrook Road, immediately to the east, is a colonial home with an RGFA of about 12,750 square feet. 36 Meadowbrook Road, also colonial, with an RGFA of about 7,100 square feet. And 44 Meadowbrook Road, it's a shingle style home with an RGFA of 10,577 square feet. On the opposite side, the motorway side of Meadowbrook Road, at 33 Meadowbrook Road, is a cape style home with an RGFA of 8,250 square feet. Directly across the street, at 25 Meadowbrook Road, it's a colonial style home with an RGFA of just under 5,200 square feet. Again, direct opposite of the street, also 19 Meadowbrook Road, which is a cape style home, kind of a brandling cape, with an RGFA of 9,900 square feet. And then diagonally across, probably the front fourth floor in Meadowbrook, which is actually probably going to be coming before we assume there's a teardown, is a cape style home with an RGFA of 3200 square feet. All right, to the locus itself, and going for the existing conditions per se. Lot has an area of about 1.9 acres. We're on the south side of Meadowbrook Road, about 800 feet west of the intersection of Meadowbrook and Lorin Road. As I mentioned, the existing house is a raised ranch on, that's in pre-war condition, has a footprint of 2,200 square feet, RGFA of 5,000 square feet, has a pool located on the east side of it. I think, as you folks who attended the site walk, no doubt observed, the deparage feet on the sites is fairly steep, fairly, particularly in the front half. You've got a topographic relief from the street to the back of the lot, about 30 feet. This area in the front, in the green, has an average slope of about 25 percent. Rear yard behind the house, somewhat flatter. We actually have butt come off of Massachusetts, MWRA land, as well as town forest land. And there's about five acres of area above this site that actually drains overland into our site. And the backyard features the existing deparage feet, kind of a slight depression that conducts some of the runoff from the bulk during extreme storm threats. You'll actually get a little bit on the, in that area of the backyard. The site right now has about 10,500 square feet of impervious area, because it does have a fairly long driveway, driveway's about 250 feet long from this point to the front garage, to garage under type home. Existing driveway grades about 13 percent. The house has a roof ridge peak of 197.9 feet, and it stands, if you measure the height at the garage out under, it's about 28 feet tall, and at the front door, we measure about 22 feet tall. Under present conditions, basically all the stormwater from the front of the site and the project services, more enough to narrow the road with no stormwater controls at all. So it does contribute quite a bit of water right now on Meadowbrook Road. The soils on the site, through the backyard, and actually even through the front, are fairly sandy and fairly well drained. There is evidence, and there's been some blowers done to verify, of ledge in and around the existing houses. I think I summarized the existing conditions pretty well. The proposed site plan will construct a new home in the same general area as the existing home. Footprint of the proposed house is about 6,500 square feet, and has an RGFA of 10,536 square feet. In terms of some of the site physical systems, a lot of site to work. Septic system's located in this corner of the site. It's actually at grade, and it's an advanced type of sewage disposal system that features secondary treatment and septic tank. And this is what's known as a geophor system, which is a drip irrigation type system where the tubes that mimic the effluent are basically put right into the subsoil and irrigate grass and the plants. Septic system itself is at grade. In terms of stormwater management, this blue box in this location is a hundred concrete galleries, and that system is actually designed to replicate stormwater storage that appears on the site now, and it's really meant to handle the off-site water that comes into the site, gives it the same storage capacity as the present system, and it's been located under the, under the rear yard. And this is an area of the site that is deep, goes approximately 45 feet. Runoff from the house itself is going to be managed by a subsurface stormwater infiltration system that's actually relocated under the driveway. So this is the driveway, turn it into the, into the garage, and the stormwater system relocated, all the roof downs and ups will discharge into this system, which is able to driveway itself. The main driveway itself will have a series of catch basins here and at the front that will intercept all the stormwater from the site, as well as stormwater from the slopes itself, and then discharge into the subsurface system located near the throat of the driveway. The net result of the drainage systems is that we'll be reducing both the volume and rate of runoff of discharges on the middle of the road by approximately 50 percent. So we have a pretty significant improvement in stormwater controls from the site compared to the existing condition right now. In terms of grading, I had to mention that this area is being filled with, the house itself is being located where the existing house is, the grade is being dropped a little bit in that particular area. One of the things that Yon and Eric and Jeff, we go through, is that from the site walk to now, we did take another look at grading in this area, and moved in a little bit more towards the directed by the dark blue line to save a series of holes in the back of the house. I don't know if you can play it on, but to save compared to the site part, but we'll go through that later in the presentation. Average existing grade playing around the house is 168.5 feet. The height of the house will measure 35.23 feet, or 1.7 feet overall, considering all the height and the 13 in Weston. The ridge peak is, I don't know, 3.8 feet. It's about six feet higher than the ridge peak of the existing ranch on the beach there right now. And then, I guess, the final thing I would mention, in terms of earthwork, from an engineer's point of view, which, you know, we cut and fills in, as the end result, it's about a 4,000 cubic yard export from the site. But in terms of your earth removal bylaw, and I did sit down with both Joe and John Field, and went through a very detailed earthwork analysis to compare it to their removal bylaw, and the net result was, if you do it that way, it's actually an import of 1,400 cubic yards, and it's exempt from the bylaw. So we don't trigger any pertrual, special comment, good practice.
What's the new impervious area? Do you have one that's 1,500?
The increase was...
They asked for the question, can you answer?
I have that note on my desk.
16,000?
Yeah, 16,000. Very good. Happy numbers.
What was it?
It's about 16,000 square feet, and the increase of 6,000 square feet.
Well, before you go. You said the driveway is 10 percent grade here?
Yes, it's 10 percent. Existing's 13.
Did the fire chief have a problem with that? Because I remember on a previous one we just looked at, it was a 10 percent grade, and the guy had cardiac arrest. Is that still the case, or?
Well, we're just, we gotta just keep this among ourselves, because I've been looking outside counsel, I think.
I knew you were gonna break down.
You know, I mean, we see these all over town. So it's okay with me, I just, you know, don't know.
Wondering what the special application, right?
I would say it is unique. I mean, one thing, this driveway does predominantly face north, so it's difficult, you know, you get snow and ice to melt on it. So the flat grade will facilitate a safer access into the site.
Yeah.
Are they gonna have a key to bring you?
Not this time.
What happens if it works?
The other one, the other one, I would have sure a distance, and it was a straight shot, I would have been comfortable going higher.
Yeah.
You know?
Me too.
That's got a big curve to it, so I'm more sympathetic here than, than the other one.
Yeah, where would they stage?
On the site? This site, we actually have thought about staging.
No, not just for construction. Where would the, where would the, where would the trucks change?
Oh, for this?
I mean, if we're gonna go through it, you know, we had to go through this, it took three meetings to go through this before.
Well, I, you know, I said a joke, like, you know, we, you know, that, that was them going to go ask for someone's opinion.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's not to be, that happens. So...
We have thought about it.
It's a bigger road, and we're talking about fire trucks.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks. We kind of boxed in on one, and, you know, this is kind of the only thing on there, but...
It's actually not a lot to do with work.
Yeah.
No, no, but it's something that we had to wrestle with, the three solid meetings.
You know, this one they can get into, they can turn into...
A hydrant right in front of the house.
A hydrant right in front of the house, the wider road, and, you know, if they gotta stack, if they gotta stack them up on the driveway, they gotta stack them up on the driveway.
They have, they have, they have to do what they have to do.
Yeah.
I mean, that was always the sort of instinctive response. Sorry, it's not, this isn't about you, this is just about process and why.
Yeah, the best discussions are ones that don't involve...
So we turned you all on the driveway, which is three feet, 11 inches from the grade. How close is that to the, is that in the setback, and is that could be an issue with zoning board?
No, because it's a, it's a cut wall, and the zoning board requirement is that you can't have a wall that's more than 44 feet above existing grade plane. This is actually below existing grade plane, so you have not an issue.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Thank you.
This is just about the data, project act doesn't match the colored version, not much has changed, but there's no change to the...
Are you complaining about this?
No, I'm actually grateful. The, let me see if I can... So we have a shingle and stone, shingle style residence, as Rob mentioned, essentially around the same location of existing ranch that's there. And actually, because clearly a bigger footprint, footprint approaches more in the rear of the property from where the present house is, and there's a ground for master suite that sort of extends over where the existing pool. As you know, the RGFA is 10,000, or 6,000. The roof ridge is six feet over where the existing ranch roof ridge, obviously we have second floor, but we're roughly six feet change lower than the maximum roof height, given the average natural grade that's been calculated. That's all really due to the fact that there is a rise of land evening in front of the ranch, so, you know, the ranch has a basement garage, and we're taking that down, so the first floor of our house is really essentially close to the basement level of the existing house, and that's, accounts for the reason that the roof ridge of a normal, you know, for two and a half story shingle house, is, is so much lower than you normally see on average on site. So, you know, you might see one feet or three feet, so we're about six feet, five inches. What that part of the ridge is, is a lot of roof. It's a recessive slope back, moving about four feet below that maximum which height, are the architectural elements that will be visible from Meadowbrook Road. We've got incline here, and that will be the stair tower, like, two gables, a copper portico mudroom connector to the garage, which is sort of depicted much in a certain detached carriage house style form, with a creep on top for aesthetic treatment. The, I'll leave it to the landscape design architects to talk about how the existing vegetation works, but a lot of the intent is to try to maintain, restore much of the vegetation that's along Meadowbrook. Some of it needs to be cleaned up, but quite frankly, the existing property has not seen a lot of formal landscaping per se, so a little just simple landscape cleanup will help that. We are, as you will be hearing, needing to degrade the front right side of the property in order to get the road 10 percent in, and with that, we're coming back, and we have a planting program supplement of front barrier, and also with the good advice of the landscape consultant, in order to soften some of that, there's some scaling trees brought back in that are as larger than the normal. So to the left, there's also an area of plantings, there's a beech grove that's there that we also made adjustments to location, range structures to do that, so that that area will be protected. So what does that mean to the architecture of the house? It is that the house has an informal massing, as opposed to the neighbors that are service center entrance colonials, very dominant visual facades, all white. Our palette is to have, as you've seen your handout, pristine shingles that are sort of soft beige gray. We have field stone on the first floor, some copper accents, a lot of irregularity and we've got massing, which creates kind of a more recessive treatment. The stone on the first floor is, I mean, stoner shingles is along with the classic colonial, are one could argue along with the backbone of its historic structures, the three parts that make up the, you know, the most favored, or favorite architectural character of the rest of it. Here, it's more bringing in those natural materials, having sort of a more informal landscape approach. There's the rear facade leading to that. There's more open, because it busts a melon ear, which is also a storm drain protection structure as well. There are two small abs, phase, one's a family room, the other is a breakfast room. On the far right is the backside of the ground for master suite. There's a recupulation of the main gable in the middle to be flank by, the two with high rim. The backyard grade, fairly consistent, slopes up to the east, where the septic system will be, as Rob pointed out, sort of a drip system near, near the grid. This doesn't quite show you much, but that's the right-hand side of the, of the house is the first floor master suite, and it's really up against a brick wrap abutment, so it kind of looks into the side of the hill. Not much there, except for vehicle vehicles on that. You may have seen the plan, Al pointed in between your packets. The first floor is approximately 5,800 square feet, due to the location of the first floor weight, otherwise it's sort of, would be your sort of classic 4,000 square, well, I wouldn't say classic, it would be in the big house category, a 4,000 square foot footprint with 3,800 square feet above, including some empty space for future, our studio. There's no third floor, there's no stair to the attic, it's just all looking at camp holes on that level. There is, however, a full basement below. The basement does have a sport court underneath the kitchen and pantry, flank by, an exercise lounge, and other sort of storage elements. We did prepare a site section, from an architectural standpoint, you'll see in the site section in the landscape presentation, and I'll move this along, so I think we have a little more to go for the site. So down on the left, you have Meadowbrook Road. As noted, there's about a 30-foot gradient change up to the house. The road follows a different version of the path that the existing road is. It's a side wider road it comes up and goes around. Once you get to the, the rear half of the property, this is the back property line, front property line, there's more or less a level treatment, and as you see, we'll be making some adjustments on the backside. So the site's really characterized by two very different conditions. The front, as Rob said, is very steep gradient, and the back has sort of a...
Are you doing site lighting?
The site lighting is on the landscape presentation.
Okay, so Lori, you're doing site lighting?
Yeah.
Okay, and is there any outside equipment, like generators, that sort of thing? So what is it, and where is it?
So that'll be, we're clearly delineated on the landscape plans, but just on the, but very, the big, the big thing is the generator. Generator will be on the backside of the garage, facing the rear yard, inside of a trellis, multiple trellis enclosure. It's, I think, a medium size KW generator. The landscape gradients on the other side rise up, and when you look, go back and see the locus plan, the two adjoining neighbors' houses are closer to Meadowbrook. The generator is on the back of our house, further away, facing away from the backside of the neighbors.
Do you have a DBA calculation from the, at the property line and the nearest property line?
We don't have a DBA at the property line, we didn't get that.
Yeah, we need, we need, the goal here is 40, DBA at the property line.
At the intake meeting, we had asked on that, on that side for some sort of sound detonating, sound attenuation, or that can be fixed to the labs.
Right. We're actually telling you some housing in the year itself, so basically, when anything is running, it's no louder than a car stealing apartment line. It's very quiet.
Yeah, it sounds like it's fine, it's just that, it's one of the things we...
We'll hit you in the number.
Yeah. Because the, the sound housing is not quite normal housing, and that's what we need. And then, next to it are two air conditioning condensers, and then on the other, air conditioning condensers are in a semi-recessed pit right here in the far left hand side, so they suck down, other two places there, two packed in next to each other. We don't have any other purposes on the site, no sports courts, no pools, no detached door shuts, no other, you know, elements off the, outboard of, say, a 10-foot zone.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, one thing we talked about at the site walk is that quite a bit of ledge is coming off this site, so it's going to, I, I assume the ledge was in your removal calculations?
It was, yeah.
But it's just gonna, it'll be, once again, we'll have the ledge blasting notification language in the, in the conditions, and we hope it goes well, people don't start complaining about plates falling off walls and so forth.
I, I think it'll go well, because the team we had doing the ledge, they just, they were with Mr. Catlin. were with Captain at the end, we just managed a similar sized project in the Wells lady last year and then we did a car park project around the corner a few years ago with Mark. And so I have a lot of confidence in that team. I don't think we would have any questions anymore.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, are you up next, Roy?
Yes, sir.
So now that Jan has given this easy presentation, I think it's the typically most contested presentation of the year. Hopefully not this time. So what I just gave you was the planning plan as well as a new rendering of the thing. Same plan. And what I'll start with is the pre-blew. And since we last talked on site, we, there were some problems with the rear yard. And we went back, took another look at it and we were able to actually save about seven oaks between twenty-four and sixteen inches and two pines, a fourteen-inch pine and a twenty-inch pine.
Can you go over those again?
Seven oaks between sixteen and twenty-four inches. There's one six-inch and then two pines, a twenty-inch and a fourteen-inch. All located along the rear, the rear line of the yard.
Can you just point out where they are?
Yes, there's one large here, two here, a multitude in through here, and one and two here.
Okay.
So on this plan, I'll point out a few things. Here, as you come up the existing drive, we are, we have an existing rote dumber hedge which is within some of the removal area. And we're gonna take that and we're gonna replace that back on site. The, when we did our initial site walk, it was requested that they were such mature, nice-looking roadies that we might want to use them back within the site and that is the case. There's also an existing beech tree grove and some saplings down here on this portion. That too will stay intact as it is. And we actually moved the drainage that was over here and relocated it under the new driveway so that we could maintain those, that beech grove there. Now, as you, as you can see here, we haven't adjusted our limit of work line yet, but we will do that once we, once we set up this time.
Where's the road, where are the roadies going?
The roadies are all, all plan to come out and screen this side here along, on the edge. If there's any remaining, we'll place them in as needed along the property edge.
But you don't show those yet or?
The roadies? Oh, this is a tree removal plan, I have a good plan.
Oh, okay.
I'll move on to the landscape and lighting. As we, most of the landscape features we pointed out here, we have the driveway coming through with a small retaining wall on the left and then the retaining wall on the right going up the top. From there, you arrive into a court and you have an entry court here that allows you access up to the front of the house. And then you have the actual parking court which allows you access to the garage. Around back, as you come through here, we had to facilitate some, some draining. For the drainage in the back, we had to create a berm next to the drive. So you progress up that berm and on there, we put some paper bark maples as well as a stairway coming through to the backyard. And then coming around the house, we have a terrace in the rear with some pre-standing walls. And then coming around the house to the neighbor's side, due to the cut we have to make, we have proposed a riprap wall with planting pockets in, within it, so for a visual purpose from the house. We did speak to this neighbor after our site meeting and we are working through with her currently. We still just have to set up a meeting with her and she's.
She's quite pleased. We told her about augment existing trees. She's probably fifteen feet tall or less.
Yeah.
And she's here.
Are you there?
Me?
Oh, you're not the neighbor?
No.
She's not here, I think she's away.
Yeah. It's, it's down this side here.
How, how high is it? Sort of like the grade of the lawn to the top?
The, the grade of the lawn is about a one-seventy and the top of that riprock wall is about a one-seventy-nine on the back. But we've, we've done a one to three grade here so we can incorporate planting pockets within that. And then the steepest part of the wall, the area is, which would be closest to the house we could hear. So coming back around the house, we've, in the front, there's a, there's a retaining slash six-inch high wall as if you're, if you're up here. So you will see the front of that wall and then as you progress up the driveway. And then I will move into lighting from here.
Actually, just to be clear, so the new plantings between the house and the street are what, where are they and what size are they and what species are they?
Correct. I was gonna do the, the painting around after, but I'll go right into that now.
We have a, just a side note, we have a separate planting plan we kind of broke it out on.
If you have a separate plan, then let's, then go ahead, you know, lighting and we'll get into that.
Sounds good. So just for lumen count, we have twelve thousand four hundred and fifty lumen's for the landscape and six thousand five hundred and forty lumen's for the proposed exterior of the house. That gives us a total of eighteen thousand nine hundred and nine. So we're under the cap. And then on to the display, what we're doing, we have one post light down at the entry and then wall lights along this wall to guide your way as you're coming around to the garage. And those wall lights are not to be seen because as you come through the road, they're all on the backside of this wall up the grade. So as you drive by, you won't be able to see them.
The post light?
The post light, yes, the wall lights, no.
What's, I mean, is there an equivalent incandescent rating or some sort of indication of how, of how bright that fixture's gonna be?
The post light is four hundred and fifty lumen.
Eighteen watt?
The conversion, I do not know on the watt. It's pretty low, actually. It's probably like a thirty-five or forty-five watt.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah. We can get you the equivalent.
Okay. Because that's not a, that's not a cutoff fixture, right?
Cut, what do you mean? It's dark sky equivalent.
Oh, it is? It's up in the housing?
It is up in the housing. And it's one that has been proven fast.
So I'm, I'm sorry, you said, is that a, what kind of bulb is that?
It's a four hundred and fifty lumen output incandescent. Sounds probably like a.
Forty watt bulb.
Like, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we've come around, we have the wall lights here. On the house, I'll let, I'll let Jan explain some of those, so I'm just gonna do the actual perimeter on the landscape. We have path lights at this entry court, some step lights as you come up into the front of the house and two path lights to let you know you've arrived in front of it. Going around the back, ringing that stairway that go to the, that goes to the rear lawn, we have path lights. Those path lights follow down the path to the rear. And then within the rear, we have the rear pre-standing walls, sitting walls, we have two wall lights as well as two step lights here.
So just to get an idea of number, how many, how many, it looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven wall lights along the driveway.
Correct.
And then it looks like there's one, two, three, four, four wall lights in the back here.
There's actually ten along the driveway. And there's four along the back there.
How many path lights are there?
I have a string of six here, four here and two here.
Wow. And the, the path lights, what, what do, what do the path lights look like?
The path lights are like this here. The, the light is actually all the way up in the top of this housing, so the light shits downward. And then the wall lights are of a louvered kind, so they're, they're actually different than what we normally use. So they shine most of their light down and they have a louver on it, so as in, you don't get the direct shine coming out of it. And then, and then these are.
Those are up, there are only two of them. The, the front entry portico and mudroom portico who's hit up inside the ceiling porch behind it, the sort of, you know, light directive over the doors. And before we flip back, just to address the night sky comment, both the post light down at Meadowbrook, the side post of Meadowbrook Road and all the wall sconces are, will be night sky. And I know you had a question on that, so we will, as a matter of course, confirm that the lights, bulbs themselves are up inside the solid portion of the housing, so there's no lateral dispersion. So that, that we agree will be confirmed. This is a light the board has approved before, but we're gonna double check and verify it at the front. So if it's different, then we'll specify it as it's performing.
And here, I'll move on to the planting.
Can we go back to the lighting?
Yeah.
What's on the house? So the house itself has no floodlights. And we have two points of entrance on the front, they're both, you know, column porticos. The front entry just has two of those wall sconces on columns ranking the front door, similarly at the mudroom door. And then right above the door inside the recess of the portico ceiling will be one of those ceiling lights which we used at the E Road, same type of light in that project to just essentially light the doorway. And then the wall sconces kind of throw light down onto where, you know, the stoop itself. The, once you come up around to the garage, there's a three-car garage, there's one of those night sky sconces between each door so that we're able to sort of illuminate the garage itself. These low-level wall lights are fifty feet away, so they're not gonna, you know, do anything. Again, no floodlights, so that's what you get to sort of define, once you get up to the top of the hill, you know, ambient light will be, figure out where you park around in that. On the back, fairly simple, there are two points of egress, one to the backside, so they're just, I think, a light in the ceiling and another sconce. And then there's an exit, breakfast room and family room, so there's just three sconces, whirling barbecue at the backside of the kitchen. So the, of the three lights, they're kind of strategically coordinated to do both doorways and.
All right. How much light do the garage lights throw, you know?
They each project four hundred and fifty lumen's. Again, it's I think equivalent of two of these thirty watt lockers that are up inside the.
Yeah, each is the equivalent of about a forty watt bulb.
Yeah, and, and again, casting down around sides of the doors.
They're throwing out about a hundred and sixty watts.
Yes, in total.
Yeah.
So. So here's the garage elevation here. So you'll have a light set roughly around six foot six, seven feet here, 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 downward projection. So basically, the four stone pillars get illuminated, hopefully like light off the paving to throw out and that, and then that helps guest parking.
And on top of that, we're actually set lower in this area than the house next door that we're taking while here. And we've actually lined this area with some screen trees as I was playing in the next play right now. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna take into the planting here. All right, so start the front. What we have is a mix between balsam, serbian and Norway spruce to accent these groups of trees that we're actually saving in the front of the house. So currently, there is a bunch of groupings of deciduous as well as nubril trees in these areas. And what we're gonna do is we're saving the majority of these two groups and, and accepting those two with some existing twelve to fourteen-foot serbian and balsam fir. Now, in adjacent to this area, we're also adding some balsam fir, twelve, fourteen and serbian on this side and then letting this group of trees naturalize up the slope. We didn't want to infiltrate that area too much because that is the grove that we're trying to save. And then now, as we come up the drive, some comments were that we, we needed to save and replace some of the larger trees that were on site. So when we were looking at this, originally, we were wanting to come through and bring the grading in to make the grading feel a little better here. Well, we've, we've drawn back on that and we've actually saved about three or four trees in this area, not since what you've seen, but since our full process, which we started originally working on the, on the property. And then in conjunction with that, we're bringing in some seven to eight inch caliper sugar maples as well as some five to six inch caliper honey loks to give the front of that, that property that, that screen that you, and established feel that Meadowbrook has, you know, that you have the scaling trees. And then as you, as you come up the driveway, we have the Cleveland pears signifying that you've entered an area. I mean, from there, some lower Stuartia and then it just gets lower as you progress up to the front of the house. Now, on opposite ends of the house, you like to have something fall to break up the actual corners. And on, on this, when we have the sugar maple here at four or five inch, and then we have the Cleveland pear on this end. Now, as we go around the back, and I'll, I'll explain the adjacency here, there's a very strong existing nubril line here. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna accent that line. Because that line has such tall trees, the undergrowth has, has diminished in there. So we're gonna accentuate that with some ten to twelve foot as well as both fourteen foot, a mix of serbian Norway in, in that area. And then as we come around the back, once you get past the view of the house, there's another strong line of trees, which this plan actually doesn't show. It's better shown on the middle area up here, which as you can see, extends quite far back. So about here. So, and then the opposite side of the house, what we have, a condition over here is, this house is actually very far below the grade of what we're working with here and we have to put this retaining wall in. And on top of that, we're actually, we're gonna be putting some ten to twelve foot Norway, serbian mix as well as those roadies that we took over, took out of here. And we're gonna scatter them along this area to provide that lower screening that's needed over there. And then around the back, we have some more honey locusts. And, and as you see here, and as you can see in the rendered plan here, we have brought the lawn line in significantly from what it was. We're gonna let this area naturalize. And then we're, we're adding Cusa dogwoods and a mix of Rutgers dogwood along the back for some color pop. And then around the house, again, we have some, small specimen trees, Japanese maples. And that's the majority of the plant.
Okay, thank you. Is that, you know, the presentation, Jan?
It is.
All right. Then let me ask our engineer consultant, Dave, how's it look?
Stall wire is fine, you know, there's just, there's a twist to this because there's that, that area that we're basically replacing. But we've been talking about that for, god, like a year or something, right?
Yeah.
And then the sports court, you know, there's something for out there, there's another sports court that's down there, obviously it's down pretty far.
Right.
They're not proposing, they're basically proposing building a boat section, not any, any sort of sub drainage or pumping, right?
That's right.
So, which is a little different than some of the other ones we've seen, like top. So, which is a little different than some of the other ones we've seen, like Cock, Cock Hap, who do that with.
Yeah, you're gonna be in the groundwater, they're gonna be in the groundwater.
Right, but they're basically gonna build a boat, there won't be any pumping, there won't be any groundwater discharge.
Water tight shell, is that what you were talking about?
No groundwater discharge.
They did get one in Love and Walker, right?
I didn't think about that. But Cock Hap, they had pumping. But, just to keep in mind that if somehow that changes direction, then it needs to be pumped. That you would need to come back to the planning board. A separate drainage system just for that, based on what you're finding there, would need to be designed and approved.
How far under the groundwater are they? Do we know?
It's a, it's not a straightforward answer, because the groundwater there is perched at probably at roughly six to seven feet. So, I mean, in, in one answer, you'd say, well, we're eighteen feet of groundwater. But we've been working pretty closely with the geotech, and we've done some boring out there. And the feeling, both the geotech and myself, is that once the initial surge of groundwater gets through there, you're not gonna get much, um, much water moving through the rock itself. So there's not gonna be a lot of water to actually handle, um, once you're below the top and some soil in the beginning of the rock. It's not highly fractured rock. So the thought is that there's not gonna be a whole lot of water moving through that. It'd be fairly easy to manage, both during construction and then, as Dave said, it is basically a couple of constructions, so there's no, no need to out with the water anywhere.
We've had pretty good experience and success with a special geotechnical team that does a lot of underground structures in Boston, it's been built out of materials, yeah.
One of the things they do right now is actually put an additive right in the concrete, that, that seals the concrete.
One of the primer materials they're using to prepare the thing.
You have to do extra steel in there to, to, to make your stuff perfect.
It is a bad, bad construction, something like, well, I should look it up.
It's an eighteen inch, um, the commercial structures we build at that system, in that bit.
A little water there.
So we have, we've already engineered it, and so it's, it's a strong box, so.
I appreciate the whole, do that opposed to having a additional program outside. Appreciate all this expense.
Oh, it's raining a shot.
You can turn the lights on if that...
Anything else, Dave?
Uh, but, all right.
Kim, what do you think?
Um, I will say that the plant's come a long way from the very first days that we saw it in the one. Originally, the whole front was pretty much cleared for the grading, so they've come, they've scaled back quite a bit on that. When we originally, Joe and I and the consulting team met out and looked, I was primarily focused on the front yard, because there was so much coming out of there. Um, but when I saw the site, a lot of the trees in the front yard are not in great shape. But there were three things that I saw that were important to me, to me to save. One was that beech grove, and I know, I don't think Susan, you had a chance to, but it's, it's beautiful, and they did...
And rare.
And, and rare.
Quite rare.
So they, they're doing their best to save that. Number two were those very large, mature rhododendrons, which are right where the existing curve of the driveway is, they're tucked right in there. One thing we had suggested at the site walk was to take those out and put them back in the same spot. And I would suggest that as a potential suggestion to the applicant, um, to put them potentially where that retaining wall is.
Right.
To further...
Why would that be a problem, Ron?
I wouldn't say it's a problem, clearly, to the look, and I think that that tree behind the wall.
Yeah. And they are, we can live with that. Yeah.
And three, thirdly, were a couple of sort of trees that were still healthy, and we've identified those, and those are remaining on the plan. I think that that one that you're seeing, sort of right in the center, the Roy Pecnic farm mound, that's the one in the plane, um, which is a beautiful tree, and probably the nicest one out of all share of state. Um, the, I'm not as concerned with this neighbor here, because that buffer is pretty good. Um, I'll let them work out between the neighbor, I mean, I don't have much further comment, except that they should speak with their neighbor and, you know, do whatever they can. The, the buffer on the top part there is, is primarily hemlock. Um, and one thing I did notice, I think you are showing some signs of willis algae, so that should be considered and to maintain the health of those plants. Um, I think putting in additional evergreens there that will grow, if the hemlocks do succumb to the willis algae, is gonna be very important. But I think it's a very narrow, very tight space in there, and, um, I think we're actually gonna be careful about digging within the root systems and, you know, getting those in there so that they survive. Um, so I, those are my, those are my big comments.
The hemlocks are on the other property, okay, a lot of them?
Some of them are.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some on both sides of the line.
Yeah, but where it gets to be, where your, where your infill planting is, it looks like those hemlocks are, if I can read that right, it looks like the trunks are either right on the property line or just a little over, I mean, on the other guys.
We actually don't show all the hemlocks that are, that are here, we only, we only got right up to the property line. And then, you, and you can see there's a significant amount over here, more than is shown on that line.
Yeah, but controlling the algae is, the other guy's property is gonna be a challenge.
Yeah.
So...
Some of it has to work out with the neighbor.
Yeah, for sure.
And we also had a certified arborist run the whole site and give us an analysis on all the trees. So there's, there's actually very minimal dead trees out there. And there's, there's some good, uh, healthy trees actually out here that you're gonna find those up here.
Yeah, I want to say we did change the plan after we went up there, so we're here for our comparison, we're gonna say those three trees.
Yeah, that's good. I think the backyard's gonna be different. All right, any comments from the board, you guys? Yeah?
I appreciate what you've done to the rear yard and keeping a lot of the trees, it looks much better than before. But when I look at the, the plan of the trees to be removed, um, I still see some trees within this area that look like they could be saved. And I don't know if you didn't save them because they're not good specimens, or what's the theory?
Yeah, we actually attempted to save everything we could within this area, so here...
We haven't updated tree...
Yeah, the one that you have currently isn't, isn't actually updated.
Right, but when I just, when I look at this, and I, I, you know, I see some trees here, and some trees here, that look like they could remain within this, within this shaded area.
Yeah, and I, I'll respond to that. Due to the extra drainage area here, and the trench drainage we're putting in, as well as the septic, we weren't able to save as many as we would have liked. Um, and unfortunately, that's where those two aspects have to be within the site.
They can't be under the wall?
They are currently under some portion of the wall.
Right, I mean, if they're moved a little closer, is that something that can be done? That allows you to have more area to just sort of leave the trees, if they're in healthy shape?
I can take a look at it, David. We did kind of manipulate that hundred gallon system quite a bit to save the trees, as we did. And it does, in order to get it into the right elevation, so that we have a separation of groundwater, there are some lateral restraints in terms of where we can move that, how far we can slide that. But I'll, I'll take one more with this, this shifting a few feet saves a few trees, then... It's a sort of good sense. The septic system itself, that really doesn't take down the...
Takes one extra tree, I think, which is the twenty-four inch nubif.
I, I've looked at that as well. We're actually pretty careful in designing the septic system, we're gonna watch the trigger for that.
Oh, that's good.
I would like to just congratulate the owners, thank the owners for assembling a team that worked very well with the board's consultants. And we have a plan, makes our job.
I think that's a very nice point.
Roy, any comments?
Um, I just want to confirm some of the facts that you talked about. So, the current conditions for impervious material are ten thousand five hundred?
Yes.
And then the proposed is sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand and change, yeah.
Yeah. How big is the backyard? I'm just getting a sense for how far it goes back. It's a little hard to say, because I remember when we were there, we had some sense that, I don't, the landscape sort of just up.
It steps up.
Right, and it steps up sort of gradually, not sort of like the front.
The current backyard we have is, at its widest point, it's about eight, well, let's call it eight feet from the impervious material, um, back here. And then the width is about a hundred, two hundred and twenty feet.
That is eighteen thousand two feet, if I can calculate that.
The original house was roughly sixty-five hundred square feet, seven thousand?
Rose, rose floor area based on the definition of RGFA and biologs, which would include, includes part of the garage, because it's a garage down there.
And the original house was turned slightly, right? So that this, the house is now facing, in a way, facing the site differently?
Um, very slightly, yeah.
Is it that?
There's not much of a rotation on this area.
Twenty degrees?
Um, you know, probably maybe fifteen to twenty.
What, um, how it does, it's now orthogonal to the side lock line and, and more orthogonal to the rear, because once you get up to the top of the building, it can, it can happen a lot, because it's a different site from the front. Um, so it now sits more in relationship to the boundary point, so...
In conjunction with that, it's actually offset from the other two houses, so we're not, you know, have that flooding situation where you're staring right into your neighbor's rear or side yard. So it, it creates a much lanser situation there in terms of how the house is sitting.
So we have here, um, so the, the back works, so we're now, um, before, the house was like on an angle like this.
Right.
With this, this, that, so now we're sort of more parallel to this neighbor and le, and, and less obtuse to this neighbor. So, see, if you have a, a street wall setback, we're probably, you know, we're clearly about thirty feet behind this neighbor and more, you know, less than feet behind that neighbor. That's also, this lines with the generators, that's why even with the forty D B housing, um, the noise is baffled by the garage structure from, from the cars.
I mean, my initial inclination was just that, how the house sits on the site occupies a great deal of the visual on top of, obviously, what is now alleged. And some of this is gonna be cleared in a way where the house is gonna be seen more.
Um, yes, yes and no. What, um, one of the consequences of pulling off roughly seventy and a half feet of, of on-cropping in front of the existing house is to allow the entire, because we're dealing with a one-story ranch, uh, just to take it to a full two-story, um, shingle house and allow the first four to occupy that lower level. So, given the fact there is, um, a scaling of landscaping and landscape, there is a, you know, if you look at a, you know, a... Here, I'm sorry, here's a site section. So when you're down here, and you look at a line of sight, there's a lower tanning wall that you'll come up and you'll see somewhat in the middle of the first floor. Again, aside from design, the parts that you'll, you'll notice more from Meadowbrook are the cross gables that are much lower than the main mass. And because the main roof is receding in perspective, if, when you pull it back, it, it perceptually drops down. So one of the, um, massing benefits, you know, because, uh, if it were a colonial, the roof massing would be much higher, because you'd go to the top of the second floor to spring your roof here, which is endemic to the shingle style, which scales better. We spring our, our roof from the top of the first floor. So the combination of starting, you know, a half a foot down with a style of house that starts with roof lower is in part, um, less than what in theory would be passable, right? It doesn't really mean anything necessarily, because this is sort of totally coordinated combined thing. But as you can see from these adjoining, our, our, our massing and scale is, um, is, I think, complementary to neighbors. And the fact that we're pushed back roughly thirty feet on the left-hand side and this neighbor's ten feet on the left-hand side from this neighbor, uh, reduces the impact just for the way you get from Meadowbrook. The other interesting thing is Meadowbrook does pitch down from right to left. So, uh, and it's interesting, because the, the, um, lower roof element being garage is against the higher elevation in Meadowbrook. So, you know, when you get there, as you go down, up, then, um, things just, I think it scales, scales well. If you drive up, it just gets smaller as you're heading in the town.
I need to point to keep in mind, is we're adding screening trees at the street. So when you think about, some trees are coming down, but some of those trees are fifty feet tall, they're really providing no screening. So when we add the twelve, fourteen, fourteen to sixteen foot trees at the street area, it'll actually be diminishing the house.
Sort of an understory fill-in. We end up with these telephone poles over the time, because the canopies keep reaching up, uh, to the sky, you know, searching for sunlight, so they crowd each other out, the low ones die. And so the understory fill-in, I think, will, will go a long way to, to modify the...
Can you describe in the site section where you're cutting and where you're filling?
Um, certainly. Um, in the site section, there is, uh, existing red story comes up like this to sort of where red door, the top of these garage doors. And then it slopes down. So, so right in here, we're gonna try to...
Go for it.
From this point to that point is that section, existing house being on an angle sits up here, and then there's a garage down there. Um, so we sort of overlap most of that. Uh, and then, I think as Roy pointed out, besides the understory ceiling that's illustrated here, there will be a band of landscaping at the, at the front of the house. And I think the combination of first floor being scanned in stone, you know, like, like stone retaining walls and scenic roads, um, is, is different than having a white billboard running from its, uh, colonic, which, which we love doing too. But in this case, we, we're more of a shingle style, I think blends better, particularly with the, the materials we selected is more complementary to the natural landscape in color of Tueton's and so forth.
Another point is, we, we forego the, the typical turnaround that you see all along Meadowbrook. So you don't have those large six to eight foot walls within the property setback lines or within the actual property, within that. So this way, you have more of a natural path up, and it, and, and more of a natural sloping, uh, grade coming up the slope.
Didn't you start with one? We thought we wanted one?
We actually started with that, so we wanted sports court.
Yeah, so, but we, we...
Too, too much graying. This is perhaps, you know, I don't know, I can't see your side, but...
We, we don't think that came across.
Right, but that, that's, um, I was asked to come in and see what I could do with it, and I played with it, and it was, um, sort of... So...
You're off the log and stool.
Is the rear yard being filled to flatten it? It, it is, and that's in part to do two things. One is, um, as Rob pointed out, to put in the drainage structures for the upper watershed and clear the distance between the bottom of those structures and, and the prevalent water cable. So that's already, um, a condition that gets intermittently wet. And, and so, um, there was also the issue that that gets, is just containing it. So that, that is, it is down at that end, and that continues to have that hundred gear function, just the whole, the five acres to the south that are draining light into that spot.
Yeah, it was twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, then, and then the other is just to, uh, dust slope and blend slightly in a park like setting and, and, and just sort of, uh, uh, to even things out on the backside of the house. One important thing from, uh, the architectural design standpoint is the site faces, uh, the upland hill going up the double hill. So, we're, we, you know, goes on for quite a while. And, uh, one of the, the goals of trying to site the house between, uh, the steep front and maintaining as much as we can the back is to deconstruct sunlight into the rear of the house, which is that, the side of, of blast, which basically. So, there is, um, you know, if you ran shadow studies, all these upper trees casting shadows probably over three quarters of that, that lawn here is so, is, is controlled. The amount's not like getting to the ground problems for happy.
That south setback line, that's, we, you've got to be careful about that. Looks like the building's sitting right on the south setback line, right?
The, the one that's here?
Yeah, bottom of the sheet.
Yes. You mean?
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, yeah.
It's right on it.
It's right on it. And I think you have good, um, standard language in your C of A about getting it surveyed, this face.
It looks like it's right on it.
No, we obviously.
About an inch?
No, no, no. Minimum of three to six inches over. And, and Metro West would be staking every step away.
That line's actually a little thick because there is some planting along the backside of the house.
If the, if the, if the basement springs a leak, um, and they have to pump, then that's going to be a serious review. I'm just trying to think where that, where that would pump to.
Well, we really depend on, on the rate, you know. If it was a relatively manageable rate, we probably would pump it into that back under the gas system. Because typically that system's dry and, and it, it's designed to handle a surge of water from the back. Whereas if you are getting infiltration into the basement, it's going to be a constant rate. So, I think we could, we actually had a system designed earlier to, to manage it on site. But, um, you know, I was kind of happy when we decided to build a, to build a boulder instead of.
The product is called Cyplex X Y P P X. It was started in Holland four years ago and has succeeded in four countries. It has two, it's an admixture, but its primary use is to be applied onto existing concrete. Most popular product was the basement, uh, and elevator pits. The elevator pits go down.
No, I, I mean, I believe you, but, you know, Murphy's Law.
Is this to replace the little Dutch boy? Is this to replace the little Dutch boy?
Right, right. And so, they come in and you have to gather the information and pack it in. But we're going to add inventory out and see if there's a quality control issues. However, because I do not want to do quality control issues, we are hiring full-time inspection during the concrete work to ensure that it is dosed properly and there's no lag between concrete structures, the pole joints in the core, which can be remediated afterwards. But we don't even want to remedy it. We want to have, that's why I say it's a commercial flaw.
Do you have a question?
I, did we get a sense for how, how long the building is? We're talking about, I didn't get a sense for.
Do you have that nice sense of, you know?
It is approximately a hundred and thirty by an average.
Length, length.
You have the length?
Hundred and thirty.
Yep. And so, what that is, is our typical center entrance, uh, colonial or typical house range is between eighty-eight and a hundred and, uh, five feet in length. Adding a one-story master suite on the end extended that roughly about twenty-three feet. So, round out an average house, say a hundred and five, you're at eighty-eight, a hundred and five, depending on the length of the main house, to a hundred and thirty. With the shingle styles opposed to colonial, um, they tend to be a little longer on the main wing. So, we have the, the garage piece between twenty-four and twenty-six feet, the mudroom connector. In this case, I think it's around eighteen, but you know, average is maybe twelve, fourteen. The tip, most common with the main wing of houses is forty-eight feet. Uh, our typical shingle needs to be more length, goes to fifty-five, as you example, as the case here. Then we add this one-story recessive, uh, sort of, uh, natural suite effect.
So, I'm, I'm hearing you say another, the profile of the shingle style is, is shorter but longer.
Correct. And it's more underling. So, you might just see from a distance the, the cross gables that are in the middle. And, and we have the landscaping probably disguised the natural thing on the far lab, which is slightly recessive. How does the water get into the, into our system to just percolate through the grass?
Into the back system?
Yes. Um, there's actually a series of, of drain inlets on top of the structure. So, there's air that will be graded so that it pitches to those inlets and then so long.
And there's also a stone interceptor swam on the backside of it that will catch, capture some of the water and discharge it.
This is down the line.
Over there. Um, they're irrigation styled plastic, um, inlets. So, they're relatively small and they're one of the grass, pretty much like a golf course structure. So, they don't really stand out.
It's in a bowl. So, if it, say the inlets were covered up, it's not just going to blow down the driveway. It's going to fill up the backyard.
The rear yard itself is graded. So, that it provides, uh, storage capacity for the larger components. So, basically the, the mindset in designing the rear rain system is to try to basically control anything from a ten, up to a ten-year storm below the ground, above a ten-year storm, it'll some little be above the ground for some period of time.
Yes.
I might be overthinking this, but do you want, I mean, are there heavy trucks that kind of head, come and go from the east? I mean, Metalbrook's a nightmare. I mean, anyone would go up at once in a heavy truck and never do it again, but.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
I mean, I don't drive up there.
You'd be coming up for Lori.
Yeah, coming up, you know, basically get from that, basically get them right to that intersection on one twenty-eight, ninety.
That makes a lot of sense.
Get them out of there.
Construction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming up from that way. Yeah, I will. Just as soon as the board finishes. I know I'm.
Speed pumps.
Right. I, I, you know, that's why I said I might overthink it. Someone might go up at once. They won't do it twice.
You didn't want to announce anything.
I'm sorry.
Where that come from?
Someone's bringing Haxley out to like.
Any other questions, Tom? Roy, you open? All right. Any questions from the audience? Good. In that case, um, I think what I heard is, Rod, you're going to look at moving that. I'll work, I'll work with, with Eric and Jeff to see if there's any. Pick up a tree or two. Uh, the roadies are moving to behind that wall at the curve of the driveway. Um, and I think that was it, right? And you, you're going to submit revised plans?
Yes.
Was there anything else that we, that we were looking at that would, that represented a change?
Okay.
Good. In that case, um, I think probably we could just, we don't need to continue the hearing for testimony. We could just go ahead and review the, the certificate of action and get the revised material in, take a look at those two outstanding things at the next meeting and review the draft COA.
Okay. Um, I'm just looking to see what time we have on the nineteenth. So, basically, we're going to be basically verifying the plans meet our discussion and expectations and then reviewing the COA.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
So, we have a hearing at eight. I asked, um, town council to meet with us at nine. We can basically handle this at seven forty-five if it's rather short. Um.
Sounds like it's, it's not going to be a long session. Okay. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.